Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, December 14th. As has been the case for quite a few months and some months ahead, we meet remotely via Zoom. You can pick up the links for our Zoom meetings as well as the Zoom meetings for other Village Boards and Commissions at our website at pleasantville-ny.gov. We have another meeting likely to be a short one, two weeks from today, on Monday, December 28th. And as also always the case, within a short period of time, you can pick up an on-demand webcast of this meeting and also of past meetings at PCTV76.org in case there was some ID of you who wanted to go back to. So I have a bunch of announcements, but I will save them since we have a bigger-than-usual audience for our first-ever Zoom Youth Recognition Night, which is always one of the happiest nights for the Village Board and certainly unhappy moment to have to be doing it remotely instead of being able to shake everybody's hand face-to-face, but by the same token, still grateful for all the good work so many kids and so many organizations have done and grateful for the chance to gather here via Zoom. I will make one preliminary announcement since we have a captive audience, and that is just to update folks on the COVID status. As you have no doubt seen already in the news reporting, the Village of Pleasantville numbers have spiked substantially, as they have all around the county. Now, we didn't get updated numbers today. There was a technical problem with the data reporting system, but as of the last writing, had, I think, 41 active positives, which is roughly speaking, double the highest number we had ever had before. So it's a scary time with big numbers popping up all over Westchester County and popping up all over the state. So without question, we're in a circumstance here where everybody just needs to redouble their efforts, avoid unnecessarily unnecessary travel, wear masks whenever you're outside in the company of other folks, and wash your hands a lot and practice social distancing. It could not be more important than it is right now. Obviously, we saw a spike associated with people's gatherings at Thanksgiving. We now have the December holidays upon us. A lot of concern that that will create yet another spike. If you have kids in the schools, you're getting repeated emails about new positive cases associated with the schools that are producing quarantining, even in circumstances where there aren't a lot of folks who have tested positive. Folks who have had exposure to someone tested positive generates a web of contact tracing and a web of quarantines that's messing up a lot of people's lives. So if we can possibly, possibly, possibly hold on in this difficult time to the care for ourselves and for one another to try to stomp this thing out until the vaccine takes hold, please do because the numbers are fair to say alarming at the moment. So sorry to begin with that slightly dark note, but I just wanted to get that out there when we had as many people as possible to listen to it. As lots of you know, on an annual basis around this time of year, we invite various organizations around the village who engage the youth of Pleasantville in all kinds of good activities to nominate folks who have assisted in various ways for a Youth Recognition Award. And that is what we gather here to do tonight. Somewhat smaller list, as you might imagine, in such a difficult time, but as you also might imagine, all kinds of groups doing all kinds of good stuff and all kinds of young people rising to the occasion to help. So it's not only a great opportunity to shine a light on each one of those young people, but also to remind everybody of the good work done by these organizations to benefit not just our community, but the larger world as well. So I'm going to share my screen and we'll pull up each of the groups that have nominated people individually. And if there is someone from that group that would like to comment about what the group does, please pipe up. If not, I'll give a little background based on the information you've already given us. And then one by one, we'll call out the names of the young people who are honored tonight. And if you are on video, please raise your hand, say hello. Just a quick hello to cause the Zoom screen to focus on you and give us a chance to thank you for what you do. For all of you who are on the call tonight and those who are honored tonight who may not be able to join us, we'll be sending out a certificate and a little token of appreciation coming to you in the mail that we would normally hand to you face-to-face. So fear not, that'll become a log in the mail shortly after our evening. So let me share my screen, and that can be a good way to lead us through this. All right. The first organization we have up is the Emanuel Lutheran Church Emanuel Ringers with seven young folks participating and nominated for an honor. Is there anybody from the Emanuel Ringers here who would like to say a little something about what the group does?
Hi, I'm Aiko Cornelius. I'm the director. Can you hear me?
We can.
Fantastic. I'm Aiko Cornelius. I'm the Handbell Director at Emanuel Lutheran Church. And it's a group of 11 ringers, and I'm happy to say there are seven of Pleasantville students who are in the group this year. Changes every year because we're sort of a community group. We draw in from other places. But they spend their time typically, they have about two hours of rehearsal time every week, and they play for church as well as local festivals and concerts and such. During COVID, we had to adjust a little bit, and we were able to socially distance do that for about an hour a week. They just had a concert yesterday that we recorded, and we were raising money for the Pleasantville Organization of BTH, Break the Hold. So they were able to, so far, I think we've raised over $700, and we're hoping more people will watch the concert, which you can find, is a shameless plug, I'm sorry. But if you go to the Emanuel Lutheran Church website, you can check our YouTube channel and watch the concert. A lot of Christmas music, and you can also support, make a donation to BTH organization. We do a benefit every year, and last year it was for the SPCA Westchester, and they raised over $2,000 for that group. But they all volunteer their time every week to play music and share it with others. So I'm happy to nominate these seven.
Thank you, Aiko. There are no shameless plugs. That was much appreciated. I hope everybody... Why don't you just repeat that link people can go to?
Sure. Our website is emanuelelc.org, and there's a link for the YouTube website. Or you can probably do a search of Emanuel Ringers or Katona Celebration Ringers because we do it... Sorry, we just kind of, we're all into this virtual thing. But if you go to our website, emanuelelc.org, we have a YouTube media channel. And if you click on there, it should be the first one up because we just posted it this morning.
Great. All right. Thank you for that. All right. So included among the honorees are Miyako Cornelius. Are you there? Raise a hand.
She's here. She's upstairs at a different case.
All right. Tell her thank you. Corinne Furnas?
I don't know. I didn't see her on.
Hello.
Hello. There she is. Congratulations, Corinne. Thank you.
Thank you.
Max Gonzaga?
Hello.
Hey, Max. Thank you. Cynthia O'Brien?
Hi.
Thank you, Cynthia. Chloe Ramsey-Lavois?
Hi.
Brennan Webke?
Hello.
And Nicholas Webke?
Hello.
I think you have a pretty impressive turnout, Aiko. I just want to thank every one of you. I have been to your concerts in the past and have recommended them many times. It's such a great thing and such a beautiful sound. So thank you to these seven young people. Congratulations and keep an eye out in the mail. We'll be sending you a certificate of recognition and a little token of appreciation.
Thank you very much.
Next up, Holy Innocence Parish Luth Group, nominated by Father Hoyt. Are you there, Father Hoyt? All right. Anybody to talk about the youth group? All right. What Father Hoyt let us know is that Daniel Dolan has provided service to the poor in New York City, a service to the cottage school youth, and has organized exempt events for the youth group, peer leadership in the youth group, and has lectured at various church events. So Daniel Dolan, we are proud to honor you. Are you with us tonight?
Hello.
Thank you, Daniel. An impressive effort, clearly with effects that go far beyond the Village of Pleasantville. Very much appreciated. Thank you, sir. Next up, Pleasantville Community Synagogue Hebrew School, nominating, the nominator was Galiet Messman. Are you there, Galiet? You're muted.
Hi, sorry.
Hello. You want to just talk a little bit about what you do and what Molly has done?
Sure. So we have the Religious School for Pleasantville Community Synagogue, where we have students from kindergarten through seventh grade who attend either once or twice a week classes for their education, both in terms of Hebrew and Bible, but really about Jewish values and about how to contribute to the community and to the world. And Molly has been a fantastic teen leader, a teen assistant in our kindergarten to second grade class for several years now. She assists with students who need extra help. She helps the teacher. She does anything and everything to help the students, and they feel really great when she is around. She's enthusiastic and kind and wonderful role model. So we thank Molly.
That's great. Molly, are you with us?
Hello.
Hello. As we've already heard from Galiet, really a remarkable service and service that goes over several years. Grade 11, it says you're in, so we have at least one more year of eligibility before you potentially flee us. So congratulations, Molly Gallin. Very much appreciated, and thank you, Galiet.
Thank you.
Next up, Pleasantville Farmers Market. A list of folks. Nominator is Market Director Stephen Bates. Hello, Stephen Bates.
Hi there, Mayor. Good evening. Would you like me to go ahead and start our presentation for our market interns?
I would.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Stephen Bates, and I help manage the market and its high school intern program. And this year, COVID-19 caused all the music and kids and culinary program at the market to be canceled so that we were only a location to do quick trips for groceries. Most of those programs were run by interns in previous years, and for that reason, many of our interns were willing but unable this summer to help. Due to these issues, we actually placed our intern program on hold in late March. Even so, some interns at that point had already put in quite a few hours in January, February, and March in support of our indoor market, and I want to gratefully acknowledge them now. And they are Grace Cusack, who has since graduated but logged her hours within 2020, Aliona Myrick, and we have Dennis. We have Nielsen Papish?
Mr. Stringy.
You, sir, need to mute yourself if you would.
Doing good.
There we go.
Okay. So let me return after that co-presentation. So we had Clara Nielsen-Papish, that I mentioned, Brigid Omara, and Ellie Pearlman. And for all of those individuals, we gratefully acknowledge the efforts that they made in the early part of our year. And that's to say, after we held our, put our intern program on pause, our great vendors and our great adult volunteers did what they could to put on a lot of adapted logistics to hold the market and did pretty well. But even there, we found we needed more hands, and we did have a number of, a second set of interns who reached out to us, and it's that second group that I want to now acknowledge. This is a group that, you know, ceaselessly and with coolness and efficiency in the weekly high-stakes quest to get the market ready by the opening bell, aka before 150 queued-up shoppers stormed our gates to enter. They put in the tough slog to break down the complex market at the end of day as well. And so for their fine example of commonness and teamwork under pressure, I want to thank Cecilia Fulman. I want to thank Andy Ragavan, I mean Annie Ragavan. I want to thank Victoria Stargiati. And those three, we really, truly thank you for your service this summer. You were a big part of making it possible for us to put on the event each week. And finally, I wish to note the work of one last intern, and not last because he's leased, but because his name begins with a Z, and also he has done something beyond the beyond. Having been in nearly every week since June, providing both an early shift and a later shift each Saturday with a smile, displaying singularly meritorious volunteerism of extraordinary fidelity and essential service, the market acknowledges and deeply thanks Josh Zweibahn for his large service to the community, to the market, and to our village. On behalf of the entire Board of Foodchester and all the vendors of Pleasantville, thank you to all these interns for helping us this summer and the fall.
Steve?
Thank you, Steve.
I'm sorry, Mayor?
Yes.
Can we just have the folks who are just honored to turn off their mute and say hello?
Yeah. Anybody? Call out their names again, Joe.
I can't. I don't have the names. I have one name.
Would you like me to call out their names again?
Yes, please.
Please do.
Good guess.
And so that would be Cecilia Fulman?
Hi.
Hey, Cecilia.
Hey, CC.
Hi, CC.
Annie Ragavan?
Hey, Annie.
Annie.
Victoria Stargiati?
Hello.
Hello, Victoria.
Victoria.
Hi, Victoria.
Josh Zweibahn?
Hello. Hey, Josh.
And returning to our early last winter set, we had additionally Grace Cusack, who may not be with us this evening. I assume she's off elsewhere. Aliona Myrick? Are you with us, Aliona?
Yeah.
Hey, Aliona, if you're there.
And Dennis Myrick? And Clara Nielsen-Papish?
Hello.
Hey, Clara.
Clara, how are you?
Hi, Clara.
Good. How are you?
Brigid Omara?
Hi, thank you.
Hi, Brigid.
Thank you.
Hey, Brigid, thank you. And Ellie Pearlman?
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Joe, for drawing attention to that.
Thanks to every one of you. Thank you, Steve Bates. Thank you to the farm market and to this raft of young folks who keep making that thing hum. So next up, we have Pleasantville High School Echo. The nominator was Stephanie Mara. Is there someone who wanted to speak about High School Echo? All right. So the Echo Club is a longstanding service club among high school students, and club members are leaders for annual community events that include the blood drive, the Tina Gambino 5K, the toy drive, and the breast cancer walk. The three folks being honored tonight are Maya Mayers. Maya, are you among us?
No.
Jenna McAllister? And Riley Vavalete?
Hi, thank you.
Hey, Riley. Thank you.
Riley.
So thank you, Maya, Jenna, and Riley, for the work you do for the Pleasantville High School Echo. Next up is the Pleasantville Presbyterian Church Appalachian Service Project Mission, known as ASP, a cast of thousands led annually by Gail Zarick, who I see is with us tonight.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so much. 2020 was such a challenging year that none of us can take for granted the fact that the village is conducting this youth recognition event. So first, a thank you to our village leaders right here on this call. My name is Gail Zarick, and I'm a volunteer leader for the Pleasantville Appalachian Service Project, or ASP, mission, which comes under the oversight of the Presbyterian Church, but it's open to everyone who wishes to volunteer. So many volunteer efforts had to change their plans dramatically this year, and Pleasantville ASP is one of them. In normal years, our team would be spending the spring doing community service, skill-building, fundraising, and team-building, all in preparation for a summer mission trip to repair and rebuild homes of people who live below the poverty line in central Appalachia. This year, because of the pandemic, we were not able to take the mission trip. And in fact, the ASP organization had to cancel its entire summer volunteer program because of the pandemic. We also weren't be able to meet in person to do the normal community service activities that normally precede that mission trip. What is surprising, however, is that this group of volunteers on this Zoom call and their parents did an amazing amount of fundraising, and they helped to ensure that the Appalachia Service Project can continue its mission to help people in central Appalachia whose homes are in desperate need of repair. This mission helps people who are probably more stressed than ever this year because of the pandemic. And the financial support that our Pleasantville volunteers gave was a real lifeline to ASP and is deeply appreciated. So many thanks to the youth who are here and also to their parents for showing such community spirit and generosity during this most challenging of years. Mr. Mayor, would you like for me to read the names, or would you like to read the names of our volunteers?
Please do. Nothing would be more appropriate than you doing it.
Thank you so much. So Gerald Amitaj? Charlie Allen? Brendan Cooper? Liam Coyle? And if you're on the call, please do say hi so we can see you. Liam Duggan? Megan Ennis?
Thank you, Gail.
Thank you, Megan. Lorcan Healy? Daniel Cowher?
Hello.
Hey, Daniel. Tom Lombardo? Annie McPhee?
Thank you.
Thanks, Annie. Maeve McCourtney?
Hi.
Hi, Maeve. Megan McGary?
Thank you.
Thanks, Megan. AJ Moore? Jack Murphy?
Hi.
Hi, Jack. Jack O'Reilly? Kirsten Owens? Sean Rapley? Travis Rapley? Brian Scapino?
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Bella Tome?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bella. And Heather Vamosi?
Hello.
Hi, Heather. I want to thank all of you, many of you who are here tonight, our first-time volunteers who helped us early in the year before COVID kind of shut things down. I'm so grateful, and the whole community is so grateful to you for your willingness to serve, even in this most challenging of years. Back to you, Mayor Shearer. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Gail. So an extraordinary program and one that has not only benefited so many people in Appalachia, but benefited so many young people and families in Pleasantville who have participated in the skill-building, team-building, and humane spirit that causes folks to give up their regular lives for a week and go to help everybody else. So that's what you've been at the helm of, and here's hoping this coming summer you have twice as many vans going to supply those good services from the Village of Pleasantville to folks in need. So thank you so much, and thanks to every one of those young people. Again, as I mentioned earlier, everyone we mentioned tonight will receive a certificate in the mail and a token of our appreciation. We only wish we could give you a high five and shake hands as we normally would. Next up, the Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps. Captain Kaitlin Zaplatel, are you there, Kaitlin? I see you.
I am. Hi, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to the Village Board. Yeah, so my name is Kaitlin Zaplatel. I'm the captain of the Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps, and I am so proud to nominate our two youth corps members, Grant Becker and Ethan Spannerman. I didn't tell them, so hopefully it was a little bit of a surprise. But it brings me so much pleasure to be able to be here tonight. Together, both Grant and Ethan volunteered a total of 485 hours to the Pleasantville Ambulance Corps. Our requirement for youth corps is 12 hours per month, and they completely blew that requirement out of the water. And I also had the pleasure of being their teacher in Pleasantville High School. So I really do admire these two young men for their professionalism, their passion for helping others in the community. Time and time again, they have risen to the occasion. They are helping complete strangers. And especially, this year was our most difficult year probably since our establishment. But they joined, and they've just been absolute rock stars, and I could not be more proud of them.
So thank you, Kaitlin, for that introduction, and thank you to you and everybody on PIVAC for the service over these many years, but for rising to the occasion in such extraordinary times. So Grant and Ethan, clearly, your first mistake was to end up with Kaitlin as a teacher in school because it sucked up all the rest of your free time. But just like all the other young people we're honoring tonight, you two are the sort who see something that needs doing, and you do it. So Grant Becker, Ethan Spannerman, thank you on behalf of the Village of Pleasantville for service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right. Last on our list, but certainly not least, is the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department. All right, Kaitlin, is Stefan around?
He is not. I am also acting on behalf of my husband.
I'll do it, yeah.
The chief could not be here. It's actually Monday is their drill night. But Brendan Cooper, who I also personally had as a student, he's a very professional, respectful young man and a great asset to the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department.
Brendan Cooper, are you on the call tonight? All right. Well, thanking you in absentia, it's clear that there's a thread here that having you as a teacher ensnares people in public service. So keep teaching.
Thank you.
So that's our list tonight. Really epically good stuff. No surprise here in this mighty little village that so often sort of punches above its weight that so many people are out there trying to do good work, even in a COVID-gripped world. So as I often think at the end of this night, and I certainly think it again tonight, it's clear that the future is bright if these young people are emblematic of the generation that they will inevitably lead. So thank you to every one of the students we thanked tonight, and thank you to every one of the group leaders and organizers and adult mentors who have led these students to this kind of accomplishment. Very much appreciated, and on behalf of the Village of Pleasantville, we thank you and look forward to seeing you next year face-to-face.
Thank you, guys. Nice job.
All right. I want to invite everyone, if they care to, to share with us the rest of our probably not-that-interesting meeting. But if you decide to flee, we fully understand. All right. Thank you all. Let me go back to the list of announcements I wanted to make and that I held off on in order to get through our chance to honor those folks. So a couple of things to be said. I already referred to the COVID situation. Our situation, no different from everybody else's. Numbers spiking everywhere. Westchester's positivity rate, something like five times higher than it was back in the summer. So we need to be extraordinarily cautious and extraordinarily careful. cautious and extraordinarily careful. Farm Market, you heard from tonight honoring those young people. Just want to remind everybody that they've gone to a mostly online ordering system for the winter, and they're still out at Memorial Plaza. Obviously, it was not possible to be indoors at the middle school as they normally would be in the winter. So if you go to Pleasantville Farmers Market website, starting on Tuesday and open until Thursday night, you can order online from all of the various vendors, pay once, and then pick it up at each vendor, pre-bagged and ready for you. The first week coincided with a painful windy rainstorm, and I think all of the vendors are working out the mechanisms for online ordering. Second week really went extremely smoothly, and it's a great way not only to get the stuff you need, but also to support the market through the winter, which it depends upon, and to support all those farmers and suppliers who also depend upon customers in the winter. So get to the Farm Market website for pre-orders Tuesday through Thursday, and then pick them up on Saturday morning. I wanted to remind folks of what they may already know, or lots of folks may already know, and that is that we have convened a task force on thinking about renovations or replacement of the Pleasantville pool. Lots of things to be sorted out. The pool approaching the end of its logical lifespan, and the time has come to consider what to do next, whether to rebuild it in a similar form or to do so in a different form. So Troy Tassier, a Pleasantville resident and a Fordham professor, has agreed to take on the chairmanship and has a cast of a dozen or so folks involved in that. So this week, let me just share my screen, and this will be helpful, I think. I just wanted to point out to you, if you go to our village website at pleasantville-ny.gov, here's the homepage. Scroll down a little bit. The bottom item on news here is a Pleasantville Pool Task Force Survey, which allows you to pop into a Survey Monkey, a series of questions, and let folks know your opinions about the pool. This is the day it went out. I think within a very short period of time, it had several hundred responses, and we hope to get as many folks involved as possibly can. And that includes folks who are current pool members, past pool members, never pool members. This is a big community project and one that will benefit from having the maximum amount of input that we can get. While I'm here on the website, let me remind you, if you click in on the left-hand side, the news and announcements, you can choose to subscribe to various different kinds of pieces of news from us. We very, very, very much encourage folks to do it, and to click into the things you would like to get, that they will land in your inbox automatically. And then while you're at it, also click into Code Red. Code Red is a third-party service that we subscribe to that allows you to create an account and give us various different ways to get in touch with you in an emergency situation. The Code Red piece is something we will only use in an emergency. It's not what we use for standard announcements, and one hopes without certainty that a year will pass without any reason to use it. But if we do need it, it's a great way to get in touch with people, especially in a circumstance when they may have left their home, when power may be out, when they would like to receive an email instead of a phone call, when they'd like to make sure we have a cellphone instead of a landline, all those different things. It is also an opportunity for folks who look after someone in the village and would like to know what's going on in an emergency, potentially parents or family members who live in the village but may need assistance in an emergency. So click into News and Announcements and click into Code Red. Please sign up. We sent out an email that you would have gotten if you're on the list, but perhaps might have not have noticed, and that is that we're likely to have a change in the route of the water supply in the next few days that may last a couple of months. Pleasantville receives its water from the New York City Aqueduct System. That water goes through a state-of-the-art filtration plant in Millwood that the village owns a piece of. So all the water that is supplied to our Pleasantville customers is filtered water that comes through the Mount Pleasant Plant. Most of the time, the source water that goes into that plant before filtering comes from the Catskill Aqueduct System. But New York City Department of Environmental Protection is on a many-year program of doing some rehabilitation work on the aqueduct system, which periodically requires that they shift our water supply from the Catskill to the Croton System. That happened for a few weeks some months back, and folks noticed the difference in the taste of the water. We've been told on rather short notice that that may happen again, possibly as soon as within the next couple of days, and possibly lasting well into February. So just want to point out that the water goes through the elaborate filtration system that, at the plant that we jointly own. The water is tested up, down, and backwards to be safe. The fact that it tastes different is a result of the fact that the source we get it from, prefiltration, is different. So we're hopeful to be back on the Catskill System, as I mentioned, probably in about two months. But beware of the fact that the flavor of the water may change. We certainly got a lot of calls about it, and I know Newcastle did the last time this happened. Anything to add to that, Eric?
Nope. There will probably be another shutdown around a year from now. So as we get the news from DEP, we'll certainly pass it along.
All right. I may have mentioned before, but worth mentioning again, that two Pleasantville folks, Andy Goodman and Greg Nemec, with assistance from Cat Nemec, put together the Pleasantville Pizza Hunt, I'm sorry, Pleasantville Puzzle Hunt over Thanksgiving weekend, which gave folks a bunch of clues and led them to various places around the village where there were puzzles to solve, and then invited people to put together their answers and send them in. That did exactly what Andy and Greg hoped it would do, and got lots of folks and lots of families outside and finding places in the village that they perhaps don't often go to. So a really, really great event. Thank you, Andy Goodman and Greg Nemec, with assistance from Cat. Just really a great thing, and the Village of Pleasantville was happy to be a sponsor of it. As perhaps you have noticed, the school district purchased a press box that was anticipated as part of the bleacher project that was built a year or two ago. That press box has arrived. It's now been mounted and positioned on top of the new bleachers, and work is ongoing to make the final hookups. But now all we need is games on the field to make use of it. So that is a happy report. If you don't often go down to Parkway Field, you might want to take a look and see that there are a bunch of other improvements, including in recent years, the addition of the restrooms, paving of a new path that goes all the way from Hopper Street over to Village Lane, and connects the handicap ramp for the bleachers with accessible bathrooms and with parking on both sides. And also, just this fall, the completion of new LED lights at a small scale on the backfield adjacent to the Parkway. So little by little, we're making some really great improvements there. I want to remind folks again, although it's not really germane right now, since we have holiday-free parking, but the village has rolled out a mechanism to pay for parking through your smartphone via an app and service called Pango. You can't see the stickers right now, but there are stickers on every parking meter. Those heads are now bagged because of the free parking. But be reminded, after the holidays, when the free parking period is over and the bags are removed from the meterheads, you can see on those stickers how to do it. You can download the Pango app, available on iOS and also Android, set up an account, and then pay for parking through that mechanism if you choose to. You can, of course, still pay with coins face to face. We decided with great regret that we could not hold the usual event for folks to gather for the tree and radial lighting. Normally, that is a happy event, and it's normally co-sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and often by Pace University, an event folks really enjoy. Given our spike in COVID numbers, it felt irresponsible to call a whole bunch of people together. But we have done so in our minds virtually, and encourage folks to drive by and take a look. Anybody else have report to make, an announcement?
Sure. Village will hold elections on March 16th, 2021, for mayor and two Board of Trustees seats. Independent nominating petitions can be from the Westchester County Board of Elections, and they have to be signed between December 29th and February 9th. You can contact the Westchester County Board of Elections at 914-995-5700 for more information. You can also call Eric Morrissey, the village administrator, whose home cellphone number is his number is 914-769-1940. He's also on Instagram. And I personally will make my decision if I'm going to run for one of those seats and announce it at the first village board meeting in January. So people have plenty of time. And really, whether or not people are running or not, if you're interested, you should run, and you can also hit me up, and I'm happy to tell you how.
Likewise, also happy to provide assistance to anyone who might look to me to do it.
The second thing is just to note that we're experimenting with a few different ways of letting people keep up to date on projects in the village and things that we're doing. One of the things you may have seen over the last couple of weeks is what's happening in the Village of Pleasantville, either through the email list or on the village Facebook page, and also in some other Facebook groups. We'll probably do at least one more of those. But if you have any feedback on that, or there's other ways you'd like to hear news, please do let us know.
Thank you for that, David. Anybody else have announcements, reports?
Yep. Wanted to mention that the village, the school, and the steering committee were made aware that Pleasantville Strong was provided
Yes, I had that on my list, forgot. Keep going.
Was provided another round of funding, so $125,000 a year for the next five years. We've been waiting on that word. We've had a no-cost extension since the end of the federal fiscal year, waiting urgently to hear that we were funded for another round, and the word came in late last week. So very happy for everybody involved. I mean, I think it's a testament to the village, to Pleasantville Strong, and everybody supporting and involved with that organization. So
You are.
Can speak to that.
That had been expected, but it isn't for sure until it's for sure. And obviously, happy news and a relief to all to find out that Pleasantville Strong will be funded at the same level for another five years going forward. So as many people know, Nicole Mallorinos is moving on to a different but related job, and we expect to have news to report soon. I know Shane McGaffey and Eric Morrissey and Mary Fox Holter have been interviewing folks for the coordinator position, and I think we perhaps very shortly be able to make an announcement. All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I just could, I'd just like to thank, you know, you, the Board of Trustees, and the village administration, Eric Morrissey and Noreen Regan, for all their support for Pleasantville Strong. We really appreciate the support. Without you, obviously, we couldn't do what we do. So heartfelt thanks.
Thank you, Shane. And right back at you, obviously, this is one of those moments where lots of entities, including the school districts and the village, work together for a coming end. Hopefully, the next five years are as productive as the first five were. There's certainly lots of work to be done. So further announcements?
Yes, if you could just speak about the public forum this Wednesday, the continuation of police reform.
I failed to scroll down to the bottom. So we have, first off, our next regular meeting is in two weeks, the 28th, as I already mentioned. But coming up on Wednesday, this coming Wednesday, the 16th, at 7:30 PM, is the next in our Zoom meetings about police reform. Those of you who listen to our regular meetings often will have seen that we, like every community in Westchester in New York State that has a police department, is engaged at the request of the governor in an effort to review our police practices and policies and come up by April 1 with some recommendations for reform. We had a big Zoom meeting with 70 or 80 participants several weeks ago, and are now moving into a series of meetings specific to some areas of interest. The one coming up day after tomorrow, again, Wednesday, December 16th, at 7:30, is on the subject of use of force guidelines. So we'll give folks an idea of what our current use of force guidelines are, comment on some of the commentary that's been out and about, not only in this region, but nationwide, and get people's opinion about both whether they feel that the policies we have now make sense, but also whether there are opportunities to change them or to be establishing a feedback system whereby we're continuously reconsidering all of those kinds of policies. So again, police use of force as part of our series of reform initiative meetings coming up in two days. That's again a Zoom meeting. You can pick up the link for it at pleasantville-ny.gov. Thank you for reminding me of that, Noreen. All right. Further announcements, reports? If not, I'll share my screen, and we'll go to the resolutions. All right. Resolution number 242, Paul.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation of the following part-time employees. Barbara Wilmore, Recreation Attendant, Clinton Street Center, effective date of November 9th, 2020. Richard Williamson, School Crossing Guard, Department Police Department, resignation effective date November 21st, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you to Barbara and Richard. Appreciate the kind comments in their letters. We wish you well in your next endeavors. All in favor? I'm motion approved. 243, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the resignation of Noreen McGinty, Deputy Village Treasurer, effective January 2nd, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
So Noreen is being swiped by another community, which shall be unnamed. And as yet, we haven't been offered a trade pick or a player to be named later. We wish you well, Noreen, in your new position. All in favor?
Hi.
I motion approved. 244, Joe.
Hold on. There we go. Article 57A of the Arts and Cultural Affairs Law and containing legal minimum retention periods for local government records is hereby adopted for use by all officers in legally disposing of valueless records listed herein. Therefore, resolve that in accordance with Article 57A, only those records will be disposed of that are described in Retention and Disposition Schedule for New York Local Government Records, LGS 1, after they have met the minimum retention periods described therein. And B, only those records will be disposed of that do not have sufficient administrative, fiscal, legal, or historical value to merit retention beyond established legal minimum periods.
Is there a second?
Second.
So I would say that's a fairly uncontroversial subject. Anything to add to that, Eric and Noreen?
It's administrative in nature. There's the new records retention policy that's been adopted by the state of New York. The current one, I think, lapses January 1st. So all municipalities have to adopt this resolution by the end of the year.
All right. Perhaps we should each get a laminated card of the law in order to have in our wallets.
I'll post it on my Instagram account. I'll post it on my Instagram account.
All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. David, 245.
All the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on November 23rd, 2020 attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
As always, the minutes, as well as a word by word transcript are attached in the backup and you can read it in great detail. Our November 23rd meeting was launched with a Zoom visit by County Executive Latimer, talking about the COVID situation. Very much appreciate his joining us. Comments or corrections to the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. Paul, number 246.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, December 28th, 2021 at 8:00 PM to hear the comments on the introductory law Local 7 of 2020 in regards to extending the ability of the outdoor business area permits passed December 31st, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eric, do you want to just report? We talked about this in work session.
Sure. So early on in the pandemic, the board passed a local law that enables retailers and restaurants to either operate on our right of way or property through a permitting process or in, in violation of their site plan to allow for outdoor seating or outdoor retail space. So these plans have to be submitted to the building inspector, building department for approval and review. That local law was set to expire at the end of this month. We'll need to adopt a new local law to extend that moving forward. In work session, we discussed what, what the appropriate date would be. I believe the board is in consensus that we should extend to the end of October, allowing, you know, the summer, spring, summer and early fall season for, for these establishments to operate outside. So that's what that looks like.
Thank you for that. And just remind everybody, obviously, as the cold weather has arrived and potentially snow arrives, it is increasingly difficult for our food establishments to continue to be successful. And anything we can do to help, please think of Pleasantville first when you possibly can. Comments, questions? All in favor? I motion approved. 247, Nicole. Look at this.
Alrighty. Before we begin, I do have to say that this one must be adopted via roll call, Peter.
All right. And we will do
The, the legal requirement.
Thank you, Noreen.
Be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, Westchester County, New York, the village, as follows. Section 1, the village is hereby authorized to purchase machinery and apparatus to be used for constructing, reconstructing, repairing or maintaining village physical, public betterment or improvement, including a new sanitation truck, the project, the cost of which is $30,000 or over at an estimated maximum cost of $275,000 and to issue an aggregate $275,000 in serial bonds pursuant to the provisions of the local finance law to finance the estimated costs of the afforded class of objects or purposes. I'm guessing if anybody joined us from the work session, this is where they're going to drop out.
I think you probably, at this point, can say as further stated
Stated in the record. Sounds good to me.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
So as reported, essentially, it's a proposal to issue a bond to spend up to $275,000 on a new garbage truck.
Yep. And to, to add to that, we have secured a grant for this sanitation truck. Right now, with the state, it's a state grant. It's what's referred to as a SAM grant. The state hasn't been actually dispersing the grants. So it is a reimbursement grant regardless. So we may issue a, a ban for the truck and then be reimbursed for it. So that is the full expectation. We'll see how the, the budget process at the state level pans out. But we will be prepared to either ban the cost of the truck or pay cash via fund balance. But this leaves the opportunities on the table.
So we're borrowing $275,000 now or authorizing the borrowing of $275,000. But let's say we spend only $50,000 because we got, we have a, a grant and so on. What do we do? Do we only borrow $50,000 or do we pay down the 275 to the point of $50,000? Like, how does that work?
Sure. So we're authorized to borrow up, up until, up into $275,000. So we'll, we'll know the price of the, of the truck. And again, we have to expend the cash, whether it be through a ban or through fund balance in order to get the grant. The big, the bigger question becomes, when will we get the grant? So we know that right now the truck costs $250,000. We built in some, some leeway if price, pricing goes up, but it'll be, it'll be around $250,000.
Is this for one of the main sanitation trucks?
That's right. Yeah, we have it on our capital schedule for 2022. The truck takes just over a year to manufacture. By the time it gets manufactured and delivered, takes just about a year. So what we'll do with this ban resolution is we'll submit it to DASNY that manages the grant process. We'll say, hey, we're committing to, to funding this project. We'll, we'll then get put in the, in line for the grant disbursement whenever they start dispersing these grants. They've now held them up come COVID. But, and then we don't pay upon delivery of the truck. So before the truck is actually delivered, you know, in the months leading up to it, we can look at our financial situation, decide whether we want to ban for a temporary amount of time until we get the state funds or paying cash, knowing that we'll get reimbursed by the state imminently.
So we've got a bunch of options and may in the end not need to issue this debt, but need the capacity to do so in order to continue the grant process.
That's right.
So, and that was a grant, incidentally, that was steered our way by somebody in Abenati.
That's correct.
Thank you, Tom. All right. Any further comments or questions? All right. Roll call vote then. Paul Alvarez?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Resolution passes unanimously. 248, Joe.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendment for fiscal year ending 2021 as listed below. From the general fund, one, hold on. $1,048 from contingent account to the bond application note interest. From the refuse fund, $583 from contingent to the bond anticipation note interest. And to increase revenue and expenses from the water fund, $5,000 from revenue account, water non-resident repair to water transmission overtime.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. 249, David.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated December 14th, 2020 for fiscal year ending 2021, covering check numbers 98822 to 99085. From the general fund, $299,839.17. The water fund, $37,090.61. Capital fund, $29,759.52. The refuse fund, $19,416.15. The trust fund, $15,190.50, for a total of $401,295.95. Details attached.
Is there a second?
Second.
And as David already mentioned, you click into payment of claims and if you are so inclined, you can read the detail on every line item. Comments, questions on the check register? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. Back to Paul. 250.
Whereas the Board of Trustees hereby acknowledges the following result of the December 8th, 2020 bid opening of bid 2020-4 Janitorial Services. AAA Facility Solutions LLC, annual total fee bid proposal, $49,249.92. An Apple Maintenance Service, annual total fee bid, $80,201.88. Therefore, be it resolved, Board of Trustees hereby awards the bid to 4-2020 Janitorial Services to AAA Facility Solutions LLC, River Edge, New Jersey, for the period of January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2022, for an annual fee of $49,249.92.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments, Eric?
Sure. We believe we've, as you see, this big disparity between the two bid results. Currently, we pay around $57,000 a year in janitorial services. So this new contract is a reduction from that. We believe it's because they currently have the contract with the school district. So they're already in the village mobilized and that has, seems to have generated savings for us. So what's that?
So was our strategy this year to find the first two entries in the Yellow Pages?
Seems to be that way, right? Maybe all the cleaning companies start with A, you know?
I, I should have jumped in there, right?
I was going to say, yeah.
Should have told my dad to have been in there to make it.
AL though, right? It's not as good as AAA.
Right in the middle.
As you recall, I, I, of course, am old enough to remember the Yellow Pages. And there would be pages and pages and pages of AAA in an effort to be listed first. So any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. 251, Nicole.
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby approves the application for corrected tax rule, RP-554, to remove and refund refuse fees in the amount of $471.28 for tax year 2019-2020 and $479.67 for tax year 2020-2021, charged against vacant property ID 99.11-2-14.2.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is simply correcting an error where a refuse fee was applied to a vacant property and should not have been?
Right. It was a property that was subdivided and the subdivided property has not yet been developed.
And obviously doesn't have garbage collection. So all in favor?
Aye.
I motion approved. And then John Fisher did not wait understandably long enough to see 252 voted on, but here it is. Joe?
Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village, I'm sorry, let me start again. Resolve that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village mayor to sign the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Mount Pleasant for water main repairs associated with the village's supply of municipal drinking water to residential homes outside of the water district, the undistricted areas, within sections of the town of Mount Pleasant pending final review and approval of the village legal council.
And is, is there a second?
Second.
So we talked about this with a, a bunch of folks who are part of our water supply system. In work session, a short version of a longer story is that there are about 470 customers who receive water from the Village of Pleasantville who are outside the Village of Pleasantville. They are at risk of receiving fairly high bills when there are repairs made by outside contractors. And this arrangement for the coming year will allow the town of Mount Pleasant to respond with the expectation that they'll be able to make those repairs at lower expense. Meanwhile, the town is, is considering what would be a long-term solution. But we, I think everybody is unanimous in believing this is a step that at least mitigates some of the expense to residents outside the village, but on our water system in the event of a water main break. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I motion approved. That is the last of our resolutions for this evening. Any further new business or comments from the public on any subject? There being none. A shout out one more time to the several dozen young people we honored tonight at the outset of our meeting for our annual youth recognition. Here's hoping we're able to do that next year face to face, but it was nice at least to have an opportunity via Zoom to say thank you, as we do every year at this time, for all the good work that those young people do. I remind everybody that two nights from tonight, Wednesday, the 16th at 7:30 PM, also on Zoom. Link at our website, Pleasantville-NY.gov, is the next in our police reform Zoom meetings. This one on the subject of use of force policies. And then lastly, this being our last meeting until December 28, we send our best wishes for the happiest possible holidays for everybody. Obviously, smaller and more limited than they would otherwise be in a world of quarantining. But hopefully a happy time of year nonetheless. And certainly all of us send that wish to all of you. So is there a motion to go into executive session on a matter of personnel?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
The motion to end the meeting as well?
That, that is, we have a motion to go into executive session. Theoretically, the motion to end the meeting occurs in the executive session. So we've done the right thing, have we not? Noreen, you with us? You support it?
Yes.
All right. With that, thank you all. See you in two weeks on the 28th. But in the meantime, have a great holiday season. Thank you all.